I don't hear anything. Can you hear now?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, then I'm gonna restart before we go to public comments. We were recognizing the passing of Donna Sharon, who was a member of the Council on Aging Board of Directors for six years. She was also a very dedicated poll worker, worked every single election up until COVID. And we had a moment of silence for Donna. I'd also like to say that I am here, Russell Fox is chairman. Vice Chairman Doug Mowen is here, Clerk Jason Perone is here. Administrative Assistant Lisa Anderson is here tonight. But we're missing the CIO and the other administrative assistant, Robin Tolan. All right, now we're going to public comments. It gives anyone an opportunity that that's not on the agenda that would like to make a statement to the Select Board. This would be your opportunity to do that. I ask that you please stand, state your name and address for the record. I see a hand raised. Go ahead.
Doug Herron, Three Shore Road. I just wanted to thank Doug for attending the last LMC meeting. We're trying to work out testing for South Pond and the other ponds next year. But currently, we're worried about South Pond and the long holiday weekend because there's been no further testing now that the beach is closed. And people are inquiring minute by minute, you know, is it safe to go in or not? So hopefully, we can find a solution for this long weekend. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So Doug, the reason I joined this one is-
Wait, 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 wait.
He doesn't know how to-
Eric?
Yep.
If you could please state your name and address before speaking, please, for the rec-
Thank you, Dr. Muller.
So Eric Muller, Twelve Shore Road. The reason I came and joined at this moment is to potentially answer some questions people might have about the E. coli risks in the lake. Not that I can give a, you know, complete answers and make everybody completely comfortable, but at least I can answer some general questions and maybe explain some of the background if people have questions. So that's the reason I'm here.
Doctor, I'm gonna give you some latitude to make a statement. We're not gonna have questions back and forth, but if any information you'd like to share at this time, I would greatly appreciate it if you would do that.
Sure, okay. So I don't have a prepared statement, so just I'll not go too long, but I'll try and provide a little explanation. So the E. coli is very different from cyanobacteria, which we faced in the lakes in the past. The cyanobacteria is something that can propagate itself within the lake. The E. coli needs a source in order to come and be present in the lake. And that source is fecal matter. That fecal matter can be human, or it can come from animals. The testing that's been done so far has just been to measure the amount of E. coli present. It has not been a test to determine what that E. coli came from. And there are tests that can do that, where you can actually go and say, is this from a goose, a duck, a person, a dog, whatever it is. So thus far, the testing that's been done has just been to identify, is there E. coli present or not? The E. coli in general, you won't find it in the middle of the lake. It's going to be near the shore. So it needs a source. So that's poop somewhere, decaying, collecting up, decaying. It needs a source. If, once it's exposed to oxygen, like from being mixed due to wind, due to rain, due to boat action, then it tends to basically subside because it sees the oxygen and the oxygen kills it off. There have been concerns people have raised, hey, you know, could it have come from like the Sutfield side, from a bad septic system and made its way over to the Southwick side? No, it can't do that. It can't make its way across the lake. It's going to be local to where the source is. There have been, you know, why are we seeing it this year more heavily than we've seen it in previous years? That's not, I can't give a definitive answer, but it's been very hot. It's been very dry, and the winds for quite a while were somewhat calm. And those are our conditions that are conducive to it. If you have a source, like maybe we have a lot of geese hanging around at Town Beach, which we often do. So with regard to whether or not any given spot on the lake is safe today or any other day, we don't know that. You know, if you were concerned about your local area, you would almost need to test your local area if you wanted to be completely sure. One other thing to understand, when you've heard that there's a certain level where above that level it's considered unsafe. People should understand, above that level it's considered unsafe does not mean that when you're one count above that level, it's suddenly unsafe. And when you're one count below that level, it's suddenly totally safe. That's not the way it is. That safety level is based on a statistical analysis. And it's a strange, it's a strange delineation line where it's eight people out of a thousand who are doing normal swimming activities in a water that is above that level will become ill. That's what that's based on. So it's not that, oh, everybody who's exposed to that will automatically become ill. And what you do in the water makes a difference. If you drink it, that's worse. If you swim in it a little bit, it may or may not be a problem. It really kind of has to get into your body somewhere. There's also been questions about fish and eating the fish. There's no issue with that. The E. coli that's in the water is not going to get into the flesh of the fish. It's not a risk for that. And with regard to testing, the only testing that Lake Management did is we did a test in the middle, just, you know, we kind of knew what the answer would be, but we did it anyway just to be able to show people, yep, we tested in the middle. And even though it was testing high at the edge in the middle, there was no detectable E. coli. It wasn't a low reading. There was none. You couldn't detect any, which was not a big surprise. So with that said, Doug, you know, I'll handle things however you like. But if people want to ask questions and you want me to respond sort of at the end and sort of instead of back and forth dialogue, I'm fine, or I won't say anything else, whatever you like.
I think we're gonna have to end it right there, doctor, because we have a hearing that we gotta get to. And we're gonna try to recognize a couple more people very quickly for public comments. But I appreciate that information. And I think that perhaps we could schedule you to be on the agenda and also have the Board of Health here at some point to talk about this issue. I know the summer is just about over, but I think you gave us a lot to think about. And I thank you very much, if that's okay with you.
Thank you, Dr. Muller.
All right, public comments. Nice, okay.
Michelle Pratt, 152 Berkshire Ave., President of Citizens Restoring Congammon. I just wanted to say our annual golf tournament is gonna be September 17th. And so there's lots of spots, silver golfers, sponsors, and things like that. And along that same lines, as an organization that helps the health and safety on the lake, I know that the Beaver Lodge issued by Tri. P. D. and J. Marina is on the agenda tonight. If it does end up that something is able to be done with removing that, we have a volunteer from CRC that would be willing to help out with that. And if there's a cost associated, it's possible we could bring it to our board to ask for some funds maybe towards that. Because if that's able to be removed and the docks are being able to be moved over, we give a lot more room for navigation and make it a lot safer over there. So we'd certainly, you know, like to help out with that if we could.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I saw another hand over here.
Cindy Lamro, 132 Granville Road. And I just want to make a comment about all of the comments that have been made about the conservation area and all the trash and everything that's being done there. Do you have anyone that is actually controlling it? Is there a ranger there? Well, the place I'm very familiar with is McLean Refuge in Grammy, Connecticut. And that is a beautiful area. It's a conservation area. There's wildlife all around. There are also rangers on mountain bikes and jeeps and walking among the people to make sure that nobody's throwing trash around and nobody's doing something that should be. If you don't have it patrolled, you can't count on people being decent nowadays, unfortunately, because some of them haven't been taught how. And also, we should have it posted for Southwick only. If you got people, people are saying online that etiquette cars there, and they're the ones that are doing it all, but we should be monitoring that. Now we solve the problem. And I don't think you can blame that on Marissa. And the only other thing I have to say is because of the way you've treated Marissa, Karma.
Is there any other public comments? Does anybody on Zoom? There's one. One.
Joanne.
Joanne, if you could state your name and address, please.
Joanne LeBlanc, 38 Reservoir Road. I also just want to make a comment about the article that I read in the Westfield newspaper today. And I'm gonna quote from the article. And you said, "There are serious conservation issues in Southwick that have only worsened over the last year. And you felt that Reardon would be a good person to address some of it. We met with the Department of Fish and Game Department and Environmental Protection last fall, and the situation now is even worse." To me, that sounds like you're blaming Marissa, and that couldn't be further from the truth.
Okay, thank you. All right, we're gonna go to a hearing now. And I'm gonna read the hearing notice. Okay, public hearing, Select Board, August 29th, 2022. Notice is hereby given pursuant to Mass General Act, Chapter 166, Section 22 and 22A. That Cello Partnership DBA Verizon Wireless has submitted a petition to install a small cell wireless antenna with fixtures on a Wameko pole number 9S located at 238 Sheep pasture road, Southwick, Mass. Equipment includes antenna, equipment adds, wires, cables, meter in fiber, D-mark box on the pole. Interested parties should attend the Select Board hearing at Town Hall at 6:05 PM, August 29th, 2022, to hear from the applicant or submit written testimony on the matter. Zoom meeting details will be posted on the town webpage at www.southwickmass.org. Public meetings and agendas. The petition plans to be reviewed, can be reviewed at the Town Clerk's Office and online. Select Board, Town of Southwick. All right, I think we have an applicant here. If you want to move up here.
Good evening. My name is Paula Colley. I'm a network real estate consultant with Verizon Wireless. And this is Kip DeVito. He is a radio frequency engineer with Verizon. And there are actually a couple of folks on the Zoom as well. We have Ellen Cummings. She's with Verizon Government Affairs. And also Corey Vaccaro. He is a site acquisition specialist with Structure Consulting, who worked with Verizon on this project. So we are asking permission from the Select Board to attach small cell wireless equipment to a utility pole that's located in the right of way. And this equipment will consist of a small canister-shaped antenna, about 35 inches in height and 14 inches in diameter. And as you noted, there will be an electric meter and a radio unit lower down on the pole. There will be no ground disturbance, and there will be no equipment located on the ground. The purpose of this equipment is to provide better wireless service in the immediate area of that utility pole. Our engineers have identified that area as having diminished telecom service.
Before we go any further, just, I have a motion to officially open the hearing.
Make a motion, open the hearing. Second, rule call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mowen, aye.
Jason Paul, aye.
I apologize. It wasn't written down, so. But I'm not gonna make a repeat all that, all right? Just so that we're officially open. Okay, did you have any other comments?
No, but we're happy to answer any questions that you may have or any members of the public may have.
Okay, I'm gonna let the board go first. And my question is, is this similar to what we did on Point Grove Road?
It's virtually identical.
Okay.
It's the same type of equipment, small cell equipment on a utility pole in the right of way.
Okay.
Smokey, this is LTE equipment or 5G?
It's LTE. It's 4G.
You asked the question I was gonna ask, so. Okay, all right, then we are gonna open it up to the public. Is there anyone in this room that has a question or a comment? I see a hand in the back. If you could stand and state your name and address, please.
5.4 Road, tell me what is the radius of that's going to boost?
What, Kip?
Roughly, depending on terrain vegetation.
Okay, I don't see any other hands in the room. Is there anyone on Zoom that has a question or a comment? Any?
I don't see any.
Okay, I think it's pretty straightforward. We did this at Point Grove. I don't think there was any questions, no concerns. We haven't received any complaints. Is the one on Point Grove Road up and functional?
It has not been attached yet, but we anticipate doing it in the very near future, definitely before the end of the year.
Hence why there's no problems.
Okay. So we haven't heard anything. No news is good news. All right. Then I'm gonna need a motion to close the hearing.
So move.
Second, good. All right, roll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mowen, aye.
Jason Perone, aye.
Okay, a motion to approve.
Doug Mowen will make a motion to approve the application as presented.
Need second?
I will second the motion.
Rule call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mowen, aye.
Jason Perone, aye.
And, yeah, we got it? Is it everybody or just the chair?
All three.
All three. Lisa, before I mix that up with my stuff.
Just to be clear, this is for the clerk of the Select Board.
Yeah.
Three Select Board members and then the town clerk, so.
Okay.
These are all the same?
Oh, well, she's got Jason on that one. And she's got Jason on both of them.
All, yeah, that one's wrong.
Yeah, that one's wrong. Okay, so let's take that off. Okay.
I think that one says charging. My very own pink sticky one.
Yep. That's why you get paid the big money, buddy. Pass that back over to you.
Yes, that worked out great. Thank you so much. We appreciate your time.
All right, thank you, Rob. Thank you. All right, so now the town clerk will sign the remainder of that.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so. Next thing up is we run a few minutes behind, but not bad. 6:15 appointment Conservation Commission vacancy with Norm Cheever. Oh, there's one. Right in the center, sir.
Norm Cheever, 100 Berkshire Avenue. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you tonight. Just like to make a few comments about my background. I have an engineering degree and a master's in business administration. I've worked 35 years as a manager at GE, Lockheed Martin, General Dynamics, Barnes Aerospace, Old Town Canoe, and Cobble. While I was at Barnes Aerospace, I was named the employee of the year of over 1,000 employees. I am an Eagle Scout. It's in scouting where I learned my love for the for the wood, the woods, the environment, and all the respect for natural resources and giving back to your communities. As part of giving back to my community, I have been a city councilor in Pittsfield for eight years and fully understand some of the tough decisions that face you, gentlemen. I'm a trained facilitator of Stephen Covey's Seven Habits of Highly Effective People and have trained numerous classes on the subject. My family has lived in Southwick twice. My career took us away the first time, but upon retirement, couldn't wait to get back here. There's an interesting sidelight. When we came back to Southwick, we built our house on a one-acre lot. And my my building contractor said I was crazy because I wanted to save 79 trees on that one acre lot. And we did. And we have since planted 15 more. So we love trees, although sometimes in the fall, when the leaves fall, I may regret that. In 2018, this board assigned me the assignment for the Lake Management Committee, and I thank you for that. In my time on that committee, I have been a diligent worker. I have near-perfect attendance. In the last two years, I have collected over 800 water samples from Lake Congammon. I have not missed a removal or installation of the docks on North Pond since I've been on the committee. Shortly after joining LMC, I noticed that there was a relationship with the Conservation Department, the Conservation Commission, that wasn't as positive as I thought it should be. At that point, I witnessed, you know, several tart emails being thrown over the wall. And then I volunteered to be the liaison to the Conservation Commission. And for the last three years, with almost perfect attendance, I've only missed two. I'm happy to say that the communication and the cooperation between the two has been improved dramatically. Over the last two summers, I have worked closely with the Conservation Department, fortifying the LPP sticker compliance, which is a requirement of the state for us to do. This year, looking at Massachusetts only, we uncovered about an 18% violation rate. And as a result, the Conservation Department, along with the Conservation Commission, are making that 100% compliant. The Conservation Commission, I believe, should have an LPP expert on as a member. I think I could be that person. This past spring, the Conservation Department, Conservation Commission, showed their appreciation by naming me to the position of unpaid consultant. There has been some discussion about the subject of should a person be on more than one voting, be a voting member of more than one committee? And I do have an opinion on that. As a matter of fact, two meetings ago, an individual was appointed to a second committee, reappointed to a second committee, and there was no discussion for that matter. I can't think of two other committees, commissions, that are so closely aligned as these two. And having a common member on both would only improve the situation even more than it's or it would be more improved than it is today. Over the past winter, I did volunteer to be LMC's volunteer to the Master Plan Advisory Committee. And I've had near-perfect attendance at that organization as well. And I think Doug would be willing to concur that I've been a contributor to that committee and diligently to get the survey in its final form and working to maximize the survey responses. Here are some of my traits that I follow religiously. Be righteous. Build relationships. Be dedicated to a thought. Be a worker and a contributor. Be a believer in continuous process improvement in everything you do. I would consider it an honor to serve on this board for the Town of Southwick. One of the benefits of attending all but two of the Conservation Commissions over the last three years is not only my opportunity to absorb knowledge, but also to observe the individuals of that commission. And I will say that I believe Marissa Cook Obregon has done her job extremely well. She is bright. She's been a contributor, and is always prepared for needs. I would have absolutely no issue pushing myself aside if you decided you wanted to reappoint her to this vacant position. That's my statement.
All right, thank you very much.
Okay, any questions?
No, but I loved your email. I realized that I did ruffle some feathers with the Select Board. That was the most honesty email I've ever received, ever, as a selectman. So thank you very much.
You answered one question I asked.
Okay. Thank you.
That's it.
Okay. All right, thank you, Nick.
You're welcome.
All right. All right, we're going to acknowledge payables warrant number 2307B dated 8/23/2022 in the amount of $1,380,686.40. Acknowledge payables warrant number 2308B dated 8/25/2022 in the amount of $5,855.70. I need a motion to accept.
You're gonna have those minutes, the 8/23 executive session minutes?
But we did table the meeting before. Were you?
Oh, okay. I made the amendment, but I didn't see the corrected document. I did make the amendment Tuesday morning with Robin.
Okay, we make a motion for that.
Would that be in the meeting minutes?
It was the meeting minutes of the 20-
Second.
No, the meeting before.
Before that.
Just leave.
12?
22nd less 14.
So we get this right.
I mean, the eighth, right? Right, because we didn't meet on the 15th. We met on the 22nd, 29th. It would have been the eighth. And then we tabled the eighth.
Okay.
It was a very minor change, so I'll make a motion to accept the minutes as amended.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, rule call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mowen, aye.
Jason Paul, aye.
Okay, but the minutes for our last meeting?
Do not.
Not done. Okay, but we do have the executive session meeting minutes. Okay. Everybody can peruse those. I need a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve the executive session minutes of Monday, August 27th.
And I will second those.
Rule call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mowen, aye.
Jason Paul, aye.
And we'll pass those. Please. Lisa, make a note that we gotta prove those minutes for the next meeting.
I get it.
Next two meetings we need to- Next two meetings we need to approve. Okay. Uh. We're going on to, first thing I have here is to accept an open meeting law complaint for our meeting on eight, August eighth, twenty twenty-two, a meeting from Jeffrey Nice of Westfield Math. And I'd accept a motion to designate town council to work with the chairperson to respond to said complaint.
I'll make the motion.
Give me a second.
I'll second the motion.
We'll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Jason Paul, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Okay. All right, the next thing I have here is a application for one day liquor license and entertainment license for the one call away organization for September tenth, twenty twenty-two at Wally Park. This is an event that they have had for the past several years. They'll have a bike ride, then they have a first responders parade. It's open to the public, eight AM to eight PM, and they're looking for hours to serve alcohol from twelve PM to four PM. And it's requested by David Sutton, who is the president of that organization. And I also believe they're asking for a waiver of a police officer. So. And we have a positive recommendation from the police chief, Chief Landis, is that correct? Okay. All right, I need a motion to approve if there's no discussion.
I'll make a motion to approve this, this events, this is the.
Six year.
Yeah, 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 but it it's always a very well attended, well organized event. No issue there. I'll make that motion.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we'll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason Paul, aye.
Right.
Thank you, gentlemen.
You're welcome, Mr. Suck. All right, next thing I have here is an invitation to the twenty-fifth Annual Southwood Police Association Golf Tournament on October tenth, twenty twenty-two. Uh, it's a great day to go out and golf. And they're gonna have it at Edgewood Golf Course. We have the information here, or you can get additional information from retired police chief Kevin Bishop. Contact Kevin Bishop at K Bish one six four at Comcast dot net. Okay, next thing we have is a letter from the Southwick Civic Fund. It's concerning, they're looking for the Select Board's endorsement of a Hidden Heroes program to recognize and thank all the essential workers who served our community so diligently faithfully throughout the COVID nineteen episode. It's going to take place Tuesday, October twenty-fifth, six PM at Southwood Regional School Auditorium. Public is welcome to attend. So if someone would like a motion to to recognize this program, I'd accept that motion.
So moved. I'll second the motion.
All in favor, we'll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason Paul, aye.
Okay. Next thing I have here is an invoice from Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, number fourteen for fiscal twenty. Southwood Community Assistant Program, that's a community block grant. This is for North Lake Avenue Engineering and Design Project, Housing and Rehabilitation Program, and our community food pantry. The amount of this invoice is six thousand, five hundred and seven dollars and thirteen cents. I need a motion.
This was the item we tabled last meeting pending this detail sheet on the second sheet, so I'll report that motion at this time.
And I'll second the motion.
We'll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason Paul, aye.
Do you have the original assigned by any chance?
This one's in color.
You got a clean one? Okay. But.
Yeah.
All right, the next thing up is review updated cable television contract for September thirtieth, twenty twenty-two through September twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-seven. I spoke to the chairman of the Cable Advisory Committee. They are going to have a meeting next week to decide on whether or not to make a recommendation of this contract to the Select Board. And I've asked that they be put on agenda for our next meeting, correct? Because we have to, I have a decision before the thirty. So. Everybody can read this. I'm sure it's going to be great readings. But it's basically the same same contract. All right, next thing I have here is discuss Select Board's future meeting schedule. I'm going to suggest to the board, since we have several key people out that are going to be out for multiple weeks, and I'm going to suggest that for the time being, we continue having meetings every other week so that our staff has additional time to prepare agendas and people to do additional research so that we're prepared to make decisions. Any comments?
No issue.
None. All right, so that will be our schedule. Will be meeting every other week till further notice. All right. Next, and I'm going to invite the chief police, Chief Landis up table. He'd like to discuss and authorize a request to keeping a surplus vehicle for traffic control car. Bob, you have the floor.
Thank you, sir. So what I'm, we're looking to do is we just finish cycling our vehicles for this fiscal year with the with the new cars that were purchased after July one. We have one vehicle going to the building inspector, we have one vehicle that we are going to be turning over to auction. Since we have established this traffic control officer program where we're utilizing retired officers or under the new police reform thing, we're utilizing retired officers for these positions. And because they do not have police powers, we do not put them in marked cruisers. So we get these requests for for a lot of details, and a lot of them are requests to have a cruiser. And so they're unable to work these details, and it's not to give them more options to work, it's to give us the ability to cover more details because there's so many of them. So what happens is without having a car, because the jobs go to them last, we end up going outside of town to try to find them, and many times we can't. We do charge when a vendor wants a vehicle, so we we charge it twenty dollar an hour rate. And so the monies that we would gain from from sending that vehicle out, which ends up back in the general fund, but it's more than enough that covers the cost of insurance and what limited maintenance. So the goal would be to just mark it up south with traffic control, amber lights on the top, so there you can see them, especially if they're out at night. And I just, instead of going auction, where at best you might get three thousand dollars for the vehicle, we'll probably generate that revenue over time, and it also will take a line car that we would maybe be using out on the road and not putting that, so I'm just hoping to to repurpose what we have.
Okay, sounds like a good idea. Discussion?
What's the cost out at the car?
The amber light bar, Mr. Chabellis does all our installations for us, so he, other than the light bar, he's been a switch, he doesn't seem to be in a probably a power source for it, but it's very, very limited.
What should be there already from the previous?
Some of it, some of the stuff is because all of our last cars, they changed the models, so we had to strip them down. So our cruiser costs have been quite high lately, but that's should start to cycle back the other way until they.
Till they change it again. What do you think, like a thousand bucks?
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking. I'm thinking a thousand dollars. I think right now we can absorb it through our cruiser maintenance for now, and we'll address shortcomings later if we have to, but I I'm thinking we can make it work, what we have.
Seems like a good idea. Wouldn't be that different than the ACO far, actually, really, right?
No, exactly.
Need a motion?
Yes, so moved.
Absolutely need it. I know you do. What we do is, so I definitely second that one.
Okay, we'll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason Paul, aye.
You got a vehicle.
Thank you.
All right, don't go too far, because you're gonna be gonna the second sessions at some point. Uh, the next thing I have is a motion, or we'd need a motion to accept a grant from the Massachusetts Invest a Dog Program, which was awarded Southwood Police Department an impact grade. And Chief, you want to explain what an impact grade is, so I don't have to?
I would love to be able to. My best guy, our K nine officer, applied for the grant. I did see it, it is to intercept in our garage now, because now we're getting pretty amazing to look at. It's early, it's like a safe to see for a dog. I mean, it's, it's, it's really an amazing tool, so they've been great to us over the years, the program, and it's certainly well appreciated.
All right, I got to see it last week as well. It's pretty impressive.
Did it fit well?
I didn't fall for that trick again. Again.
Chief, thank you for explaining that, so I didn't have to do that.
And that's the brand name is that impact.
Okay, the grant is, the amount is one thousand, nine hundred ninety-four dollars, so I need a motion to accept that grant.
I'll make the motion to accept that grant.
We need a second.
Second.
Roll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul.
Jason Paul, aye.
Okay. All right. Okay, I have a request here from the Lieutenant Rep Vanish. The police department is requesting our alternate representative on the local emergency planning committee be changed from Officer Mark Siegel to Sergeant Paul Miles. So I need a motion to change those people as the alternate to local emergency planning committee, which you're a member, right?
Yes.
Okay.
So moved.
Need a second?
Second.
We'll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason Paul, aye.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Two things on that. One is I swore in for another position last week, and they had the book was not quite right on the alley you can see. Jason was the Select Board designee, so I had them correct the book. Would you kindly just send an email to the town clerk that that appointment was made, so it's a separate discreet thing that they can use, and they don't have to just peruse our minutes all the time to find appointments and so on and so forth, which just keeps the very point. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mogul. All right. Uh, next thing is a request from the fire chief. Come on up, Chief Anderson. Yeah, because if I have you gentlemen here, I'm gonna let you explain it, you know, and you know what an impact grade is?
Haven't seen one.
Okay.
Just don't fall for it.
Think it reduces dog bites.
All right, don't even start, don't even start.
So, um, speaking of Carl. As you know, the last budget season, we approved the the pickup and the utility back for the the old pickup. And from fall of last year to now, prices have gone through the roof. The, if you can find one. So the good news is we found a pickup to to be replaced. The bad news is it shot up in cost along with the cap that goes on it and the slide out that goes into it. So when we get done, we'll have a real universal tool that we can use, however, you can see in the, you know, the a nine thousand dollar increase for all of that. And then on the utility back for the other truck, again, that doubled in price, up six thousand, so we have an increase of fifteen thousand, six oh four from where we were approved for our last year's special town meeting. So I originally talked with Carl about going to Reserve Fund Transfer Route and that route, moving some things around perhaps, and he suggested I I talk to you folks, and there might be an availability of ARPA funds to to solve the problem and not have to delay and wait for all the other meetings and things.
Questions?
Not on this, I read.
Question?
I was talking about.
Be self-explanatory.
Okay. I think it's a good source to get the money from. It's it's available so that we don't hold up this process. So I would accept a motion to utilize fifteen thousand, six hundred and four dollars from ARPA funds to transfer to cover the Southwood Fire Department pickup truck and utility bed increases.
So moved.
I'll second. We'll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason Paul, aye.
Congratulations.
Thank you all.
Okay.
Chief. How's the new ambulance?
Beautiful. Worked good.
You guys are up at over eight hundred pauses here so far, huh?
Yeah, I think we just turned eight, eight oh two, something like that today.
So with eight months in, that's a hundred balls in one.
Yeah, we did twelve hundred last year, so it'll be give or take right there. August is a busy month typically. We're not slowing down, do it that way.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
All right, we're moving on to new business. Uh, the first thing I have is a letter that we received from TRI PPI Marina, eighty-one point Grove Road, Southwood, Mass. It was sent to Dick Grannell, the chairman of Lake Management, Chief Robert Landis, Southwood Harbor Master, Dave McWilliams, Chairman Conservation Commission, myself as chairman of selectmen. It's concerning a beaver hut located on the shore of Lake Congamon at eighty-one point Grove Road. I think was mentioned in public comments by Mrs. Pratt. And the owner is wrote a lengthy letter. Mr. Grinnell's did reply. Did everybody get a chance to read over Mr. Grinnell's reply? If not, I'll give you a chance to peruse it now. Because I did meet and talk with Mr. Grinnell's this morning about the issue, and I went down yesterday to look at look at it. And it is a big, big, big beaver hut. And Chief Landis, I saw, I think, an email that you had sent out.
I spoke with our animal control officer, we asked some expertise with the birds. I only might be able to back any of these animals. Such as trapping or whatever. So she's had some experience in genetic doing it, providing some materials, send it over to Dick. And I'm not sure to what other experts are involved to it. She hasn't been contacted, so we're just an alternative measure to kind of living with them in a sense. For you said that was very large, large. So I don't know even if you want to change your behavior, they were looking at other sites, I can imagine. So we'll just be picking up the problem and keeping it down the shoreline or something, so.
Yeah, it's my discussion with Mr. Grinnell's, you know, he had similar concerns, you know, about I guess the bottom line, there's no easy answer to this thing, you know? And and then there, the letter went on also to talk about dredging. And Mr., you know, they, I think the property owners were under some opinion or some thought that the town was going to be doing dredging. And in fact, the town has applied for multiple grants through the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and feds, because you're talking millions of dollars, you know? So obviously, there's no budget for in the town of Southwood to do any dredging, and if we were to dredge one place, we got to dredge everybody, you know, we can't just pick and choose. So. I, I, I think that you know, what I'd like to do is is kind of have a discussion with the owner of the property, you know, maybe Um, you know, maybe send back Mr. Grinnell's, Grinnell's response to us and see if we can't uh, matter of fact, we have a meeting tomorrow, we're fishing game's gonna be around in D E P. Uh, after that meeting, maybe we could have a, a conversation with them and see if they have any thoughts on the matter, you know? Right, and take, show them and, and see uh, uh, what we can do. Um, and I'm not trying to pass the buck on this, it's just, there's no easy answers to this one. Um, so, I'm gonna make that suggestion that we take this under advisement, try to communicate with the person who sent us this so that they know we're not ignoring them. We just don't have a, a simple answer. But, that, alright with you, Jason?
That's fine with me.
Doug?
Sure.
Okay, so Lisa, if you can put down FYI, we're gonna draft a little letter to go along with Mr. Grinnell's um, uh, email that he sent us. So that uh, the owner knows that we're not ignoring, we're, we're trying to see if we can't get some additional information. And Chief Landis and I, you're around tomorrow, Chief, will speak to those officials from the Commonwealth and see if they have any thoughts or suggestions, or maybe can point us in a direction. So, uh, why don't we keep that under all business, so we don't forget, please? Alright, uh, new business, Mr. Mogul?
Uh, just one thing, it was talked about in public comments, thank you, uh, Mr. App. I did join the lake management meeting, they've been, uh, lake management, probably everybody that lives on or around the lake has been getting, or that somehow involved in the town, has been getting questions regarding the, the, the E coal account and the beach closure. I did talk to the health director and his purview or responsibility is water quality testing around the beach. So when we decided to close the beach, he's done testing, that's just by rule. So, one of the things that there was a lot of queries from other folks that live on or near the lake, they go, well, what now? And um, I'm, I'm not an equal eye expert by any stretch or a water quality testing expert. So um, I did attend the lake management meeting Thursday and we had a very productive discussion that with this board's permission, as we move through the, the winter season, I'd like to pull together kind of a group to kind of figure out what testing can or should be done to kind of look at that threat. So, and then a process by which those results can be posted and people can be aware of what the result is and make their own informed decision. Dr. Muller spoke eloquently during lake management and also again tonight regarding that, you know, you go test out in the middle of the, of the lake and I didn't realize that that wouldn't have a number. It was very, you know, he's very smart on that stuff and um, it, it tends to be nearer the, the shore, but what does that mean for someone whose house is near the shore and so on? So it, no matter what you do, from what I understand is you could draw a test, it could have a ridiculous number, six feet to the right, left, up, down, it could be zero. It's just kind of luck of the draw, you have to be consistent in your testing and then everyone has to draw an inference for their own, um, their own benefit from there. But I, I'd like to just work across function here between the health department, lake management, just because of their experience, even involving the limnologists if we need to. And, and to figure out what testing we can or should do and then put that into a budget formula for next year. Um, if, if there needs to be a regimen that's done.
No, that's, it's uh, when they, when we got that phone call a few weeks ago on a Friday at about five o'clock at night and the phone started ringing and I was talking to Dick Grinnell, I was talking to Alex White, our director of, you know, and we went back and forth and he made the recommendation to close town beach. And then on Monday, we had further discussions about, well, what about the other lakes and things like that? So I did authorize testing in, on the other lakes, just to that. But I wish I had talked to Dr. Muller first.
Right.
You know, but based on what lake management was saying and, and Board of Health was doing, um, I think the, the intent was good. You know, but I, now that I, I've heard Dr. Muller, I, I absolutely agree with you that I think we can come up with some sort of system that makes sense and fiscally sound to.
Correct, and, and to steal a line from Mr. Cheever, I'm also a process guy by trade, right? So part of this whole process is understanding it and he mentioned that there was actually a way you can actually do testing further to understand the source, because, you know, there was all kinds of rumor and conjecture as to where this came from. And then there was discussion that the geese are way, way less this year than previous years, but the count was way higher than it's ever been. So part of this process may be to do some additional testing to understand the source. Then you can potentially, if, if possible, take action to reduce the source, if you can identify it. But then set up a protocol, and I think that one of the most important parts of this ongoing is if you establish a protocol that you make the information available, right? So that someone can go either, if results are posted to a webpage, then we have the, the alerting system we have, someone will automatically get an email with that result, they'd have it. And they can make their own informed decision. And the other piece is just from perception, we closed the town beach, didn't close the lake. I, and a lot of people got very confused as to, hey, we closed this whole body of water and closed the entire lake, we closed one. This would be very, I think the messaging would be much clearer and everyone would have a better understanding of what's going on.
Jason? Um, I wanna bring up something, uh, it, uh, public comments, it's been brought up numerous times regarding the question and answer format. Uh, parliamentary procedure, as we know, restricts what we can and can't do. That being said, um, in the interest of trust and transparency that everybody keeps talking about, I would like to look into possibly doing something like that, Mr. Chairman, where we take a limited number of questions from a public comment, take those questions and come back within a, a meeting, one or two meetings, and answer those questions. I would like to see if we can do something like that.
Alright. I don't have anything under new business. And I don't see anything else listed under new business, so we're gonna go to old business. Alright, um, North Pond violations, we'll be meeting uh, with Commonwealth and representative from Conservation, Lake Management, Police, Fire, and I'll be there representing the board. And I will let you know at the next meeting, um, what came out of that meeting. Uh, the town hall HVAC design work is almost completed. I know we keep saying that, but we're almost there. The sewer system I M A with the city of Westfield, the, the lawyers have, are nailing down a date to begin that process because we have to have that finalized so that we can take action at the annual town meeting in May. So, um, hopefully after the Labor Day holiday, people will be back from vacations and started to focus on meetings again. Alright, next thing I have here is a request from Mr. Mogul for a high-speed internet put forth on a Warren article.
We voted on that, last meeting, so.
Okay. So we can remove that from old business. I didn't know whether you wanted to talk some more about it or not.
I'll, I'll come back at a future meeting with some, we have a financial presentation to make as a committee.
Okay. Alright, then why don't we put down that, uh, a presentation to be prepared concerning that issue? And keep it under old business. Alright, next thing I have here is Conservation Commission vacancy. Um, we had Mr. Cheever speak tonight, he's the only applicant. Uh, very impressed with uh, uh, his interview. And again, very impressed with your email and the openness of that email. So, uh, discussion? Uh, motion?
I'd make the motion so important, Norman Cheever to the Conservation Commission.
And it's not second to that, but I also wanna state, Mr. Cheever, I'm glad you answered some of those questions and brought up some of the controversy that's been surrounding us that helped make my decision tonight, so I appreciate that. And I will second.
Okay, so we have a motion made, second roll call vote, Russ Fox, aye?
Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason, aye.
Norm, you know you have to get sworn in, go through the whole rigmarole and, uh, good, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, uh, next thing is, uh, review the Southwick Planning Board contract, the impact statement book. I think we stuck that with you.
Yep, we covered it last week, I provided some feedback to that board at their last meeting, I think hopefully meet tomorrow or next week and I'll get back with them. A lot of the discussion that I had was, I, I think we talked about it last week, was keeping the department heads and commission square in the document itself. But, um, and they, they made those changes in the next draft, which I can bring back from the next meeting if you'd like.
Okay, thank you. Alright, next thing I have here is military research and I think you were in charge of that.
And the last thing we're waiting on is to hear from council, the only question being whether or not uh, as the law has changed and it's mandated by the state, whether or not we have to go to town law to approve that.
Yeah. Um.
I mean, labor council also needs to.
Right, might as well. But some of these issues we will be discussing in executive session, so we might have some clarification. Uh, matter of fact, there's labor council right there, good evening. Alright.
You, you know, one thing I noted from, not specific to this research, but it is kind of a novel thing. When the town, and I probably worth a call to council one day, if I'm talking to him on something else, when the town opts to adopt a provision of mass general law at town meeting, and I think this is what you're alluding to. You, you adopt a provision of mass general law. Ten years later, they changed mass general law, you've adopted it and you own it still, I believe. So the question is, do you have to go back and re-accept the new version or is it, it just carries on?
That's, yeah, that's, the experts I believe are here.
It depends on the law, so that law you have to, you're, when you adopt that particular law, the law actually said you adopt with the version that was the version at the time of its adoption. But some laws, when they change, but that particular law, if you want to change it to the newer version, it will be adopted. So each law has to depend on, with the law as you're about.
Thank you, council.
Right, that was labor council speaking. Alright, uh, the only other thing I, well, I was gonna mention on old, old business, the testing of the lakes, you know, that issue. Uh, but I think, again, thank you to Dr. Muller, uh, for, uh, his presentation tonight. Certainly likes you, uh, when you get people together, I'm, I'm period, gonna utilize Dr. Muller. Absolutely, okay. Old business, Mr. Mogul. No, that's it.
Nothing further from me, sir.
Okay, uh, the only other thing, I forgot under new business to announce that the uh, Rotary Steak Roast, annual Rotary Steak Roast will be Wednesday, September fourteenth, six P M at the American Legion. And tickets can be bought from any Rotary member. It's a good time, had by all. Alright, if there is no other business to conduct, I'm gonna accept the motion to, uh, to go into executive session, not to reconvene. I need to read it. I will read the whole yada, yada, yada. Alright, good night. Uh, motion to go into executive session pursuant to mass general laws, Chapter C, thirty A, Section twenty-one, two and three, Section two fourteen, Section one B. Litigation, litigation matters and strategy for collective bargaining with Southwood Police Coalition Unit and Clerical Unit and collective bargaining with Town Clerk Treasurer Collector. Executive Session Regarding Mass General House, Chapter C, thirty A, Section twenty-one, two and three, Chapter two fourteen, Section one B. And, Section two, move to go into executive session, conduct collective bargaining section with non-union personnel to not reconvene. Move to go in section. Union personnel not to reconvene. Uh, the chair declared that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining process of the body, not to reconvene. Section three, move to go into executive session, discuss strategies, respect collective bargaining. Chair, move to go into executive session, conduct strategy sessions and preparations for negotiation with non-union personnel, not to meet, not to reconvene. Move to go to executive session, discuss strategy respective litigation, that's clear that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the body, answer not to reconvene. Chapter two fourteen, Section one B, a person shall have a right against unreasonable substantial or serious interference with their privacy. Superior Court shall have jurisdiction and equity to enforce such right connection therewith to award damages. Roll call vote, Russ Fox, aye?
Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason, aye.